Wow, that was quite strong. I want to thank you so much, my brother, for those very deep insights on the culture wars going on around us. And I need to be very clear about this. It was a time when that battle line between good and evil, between darkness and light, has become so strong. It is in our time. And you know, in the beginning, God separated the light from the darkness. But today, men are trying so, so hard to erase that distinction. But you know what? It's become so subtle that you may not even know it is happening. There are now very deep shades of gray. We're unable to know what is right, what is wrong, what is dark, what is light. But in our time, God is calling us to begin to drive and to sustain a kingdom culture. And I want to challenge you to be part of this movement in standing for that which is right. If you have faced in any time with a situation where you are being forced to do what is wrong, can I ask you for something? Remember, we are called to transform society, transform our environment, not to conform to it. So don't conform to cultures that violate who you are. Okay, stand for that which is right. Okay, so thank you. Today, I'm so glad to announce a very special session. It is another surprise package that we have for you like yesterday. There's going to be a special guest appearance. I'm so glad to announce that Sam Tukura, my dear brother, is in the house today. In the next 30 minutes, he'll be sharing some thoughts with you as we go on in the course of this conference. Thank you. I want to welcome the ministry of Sam Tukura.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, my brother.
God bless you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Can I play?
My name is here?
Sure, sure.
Alright. Okay, it slips here. Alright. It's a good moment to share God's heart with you, my viewers all over the world. The whole world needs God. That's the summary of it. Because whatever man is looking for, healing, good governance, peace, blessings, name it, all these are all God supplies. Unfortunately, the world wants peace without the God of peace. Unfortunate. You know, it's just like in Romans 14 verse 17, Paul, the apostle, defined the kingdom of God. He said, "The kingdom of God is not meat and drink." And you know, mankind is so bound to what goes into the mouth, into the belly, eating and drinking. Most, all religions in the world are eating and drinking oriented. And here, Paul said, "Look, the kingdom of God is not just eating and drinking." Then he says, "It is righteousness, peace, and joy in the Holy Spirit." Now, outside the Holy Spirit, there is no righteousness. It's human efforts to be right. And every human effort to be right with God is just mere filthy rags. So, the kingdom of God is righteousness, number one. And that order, number two, peace. Number three, joy, all in the Holy Ghost. If you remove that order, if you distort it, if you scatter the order, you miss out. Because the first thing in the definition of the kingdom is righteousness. If we remove righteousness and we are looking for peace and joy, we will never find them. We must always observe that holy order. Because whatever God puts first and you make second, you are out of order. It's just like he says, seek first the kingdom of God and His righteousness, and all other things will be added to you. The unfortunate thing is that even in the church, we seek other things first and then make God and His righteousness and His kingdom second. We want to add God to the things, the things are the things we are looking for, then we add God later. It must be God first, His righteousness first, then other things be added. And one of the reasons why we miss out on the moves of God, revivals, is because every time the church makes God second, things first, God will never accept a second position. It's an insult to God when something becomes first in your life and He becomes second. God will never accept that. It is wickedness to do that, and that is Satan's plan. Now, this very moment, I want to share with us presenting two men in the Bible. As I talk to us briefly, the man Joseph, not Joseph, the husband of Mary, but Joseph, the son of Jacob. I'm going to present us to him shortly, then I'll connect that also to John the Baptist, then wrap it up all there. So, in Psalms 105, if you have your Bible, come with me. Psalm 105, I want to read from verse 710. Psalm 105 verse 710 says, "He sent a man," that he there is God. Because God is always a sender. God will want to do something, most of the times, He doesn't come doing it, He sends a person. He either sends an angel or sends a man. And it's painful when you are there in church or in society and God can't send you on an errand, become sendable. And anytime God finds a man He can send, He empowers that man with wisdom, with anointing, with whatever it takes to discharge that assignment. So here, the Bible says in Psalm 105, verse 710, "He, God, sent a man before them, even Joseph, who was sold for a servant." Now, wait a minute. This is where many men who God could have sent to do great things miss out and never fulfill their assignments in life. Here, "He sent a man before them." But the first thing about that man is, the man is not demonstrating anointing and glory, he is sold. Why should God send me and allow me to be sold first? Because if you are sold, it then means you are a slave to your buyer. It means you can brag around, because how can a soul, a man who has been bought, raise his head among people? So it looks like when God is sending a man who is going to bring change to society, change to a nation. He first of all removes out of that man's life whatever will make him swell up in pride. Because one of the things you'll find among men that are sent, men of God, or men who are sent to be in governance, is you will find pride. So first of all, what God does about this man He sends is to allow him to be sold. He's sold, he's a slave, he's a houseboy, doing many a jobs. Then why the real reason He sent is not money first yet? And a number of you watching me or hearing me right now, God's hand is on you to send you on a mission. It can be outrightly a spiritual mission to bring revival or change in your nation or in the church or in a city or in a very large territory that is even global. But you are a Joseph. He will not allow you go in the pride of power. He will allow you to be sold, you will go through things that will purge you of pride. So here, the man is sold. And you know what? A sold man will understand what other people are going through who are sold or downtrodden in life. You are too royal to understand what people are going through in the ghetto. So sometimes God allows you to suffer, because when you suffer, you are humiliated. You will understand the humiliation of people you are to bring change to your lives. So God allows him to be sold. He is bought like you buy property. He's lost his coat of many colors, what he used to pride himself with in his father's compound, and brag around his elder brothers. Look at what he wore, so different from what all his brothers wore. And God allow them tear it off, oh Lord of mercy. So certain times, God allows what you wear that will make you brag to be torn apart. And he's sold into a foreign land where he does not understand their language. Oh Jesus. So as, and I want you to see this. He is sold according to that, if Psalms 105, verse 17, "He sent a man before them, even Joseph, who was sold for a servant, whose feet they hurt with fetus. He was laid in iron." Now, this is totally different from where he used to lie down in his father's house. Oh Lord. Lying in iron? That is a hard place to lie down. You can't have comfortable sleep. Not on foam, but on iron. Lord of mercy. And he was in that condition until, verse 8, verse 19 says, "Until the time that His word, God's word, came. The word of the Lord tried him, checked him out, to see if this man is fit for what we are sending him." And when God embarks on checking out a man, he's thorough. He's going to be thorough, he leaves no stone unturned, he doesn't cover anything, he checks the man through and through. When the Lord was going to test his son, he allowed the Holy Ghost to lead Jesus to meet Satan, to check him out. Because God had said, "This is my beloved son in whom I am well pleased." Who would not speak good of his son? And the Holy Ghost said, "Well, somebody is contesting your testimony, let's take you to meet him." And Jesus, when the Holy Ghost came on him and the Father said, "This is my beloved son in whom I am well pleased," was not first led to go and start preaching, he was led to the wilderness to meet Satan. And he was there for 40 days with Satan. That's not a good place to be, 40 days. Even one day to be with Satan is not a good story to tell. Because that's, that's the most vicious and wicked person you can imagine. He is the source of wickedness. And you know, Jesus was tested, the first matter of the temptation was, he was hungry. Food. And that was the platform for the first test. A man that God has not tested on matters of appetite can't go far. He's hungry. Now, let's see what he will do. It's like Satan is saying, "This one, this is your son you are bragging about." Look, every other man, I defeated them in the place of stomach. When they got hungry, they went, they went into indiscipline. Adam and Eve, he's not that they were even hungry and they still went ahead to eat what you told them to eat. Now this man is hungry, let's see what will happen. Many people can't bring change to society, because in their time of hunger, what they went ahead to do, you can't imagine. Hunger can be in the stomach. Hunger can be in your bank account. Hunger can be a state of lack. It can be a state of lack or a need in your body. You watch it, as a young man who God wants to send to do something awesome in life, and your body gets in need of sex. Will you control it? Or you will start moving and jumping like a monkey from girl to girl, like a dog from a woman to another woman? Jesus. So, Joseph was tested even in that. A young man, no wife yet, and the woman of the house says, "Hey, Joe, 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 lie with me." Uh-uh. And Joe said, "No, I can't do this wickedness against God." He was passing this test for the kind of man God will send on assignment to bring change in other people's lives. So here, look at it, the word of the Lord tried him and he passed his test. Oh Jesus. If Jesus had not defeated Satan in those tests of his stomach, then it would be showing in his ministry that this man is a stomach affairs man. Matters of his stomach will change his message. And so many ministers that have been instruments of revival, their stomach has changed their message. Their hunger has changed the direction of their vision. Each time the man or the woman is preaching, you will know that there's a stomach waiting to be fed. It's not a heaven to be satisfied. It's not society to be changed, that is, the hunger of the man is the stomach hunger that rules the man. Oh mercy, Lord. This is why we are not having men who bring change. And you know, the next, when Satan was defeated in that first temptation, and Satan saw that, hey, this man, Jesus, is not a stomach affairs matter that this man came for. His hunger doesn't rule his life. Hunger to feed himself with bread doesn't feed his life. He won't use his anointing to satisfy his stomach. There are bigger issues in his heart than he takes into the pinnacle of the temple. Where he is going to be so up there, disconnected from the people in the temple. Pinnacle is a top. That outside the temple, outside, up, up there. And you know, who took him there? Satan. If Satan could take Jesus somewhere, then there's nobody Satan won't take. So you better find out where you are now, who took you there? That pinnacle shows so clearly how that many men who would have served the body of Christ, who would have affected the nation, either as leaders in the church or leaders in their profession or in governance, are too far from the people. You are the pinnacle and the people are just too far down there. You know, he now took him to the top of a mountain and showed him all the glories of the world and said, "Look, all this I've been giving to me, if you fall down and worship me, I will give you." Hey, if Satan would demand worship from his maker, then there's nobody he won't demand worship from. And the Lord answered him and said, "Get behind me, Satan. It is written, 'You shall worship the Lord your God, and Him only shall you serve.'" Unfortunately, Satan is giving lands and kingdoms and nations to people who will bow to him. But Jesus wouldn't bow to him. Will you choose not to bow to the devil, to only bow to God your sender? Now, let me bring you back to Psalms, Psalm 105. We read up to verse 19, "The word of the Lord tried Joseph." And what do you see at the end of the day? "The king sent," verse 20, "the king sent and loosed him out of prison, even the ruler of the people, and let him go free," verse 21, "and made him lord of his house and ruler of all his substance." Look at it. Can you see the promotion? He was first a houseboy in the house of someone who bought him, and the wife of that man lied against him, and then he was cast into prison without justice. Now, he is brought out after the word of the Lord tried him? Hear me. He was thrown into prison, not through a proper process of judging the case. When God was going to bring him out of prison, it was the word of the Lord that tried him and brought him out. So when God enters into judgment in your favor, man's judgment will be set aside and God overrules. Hallelujah. So Pharaoh brings him out of prison, but it's actually the Lord who did it. And he made him the ruler of his house and ruler of his substance. You wait, what a minute. When somebody is obey a ruler, somebody who is, somebody, you won't bring somebody else to rule your house. But Pharaoh said, "Okay, come, rule my house and rule my substance, everything I have, be in charge." Verse 22, it says, "To bind his princess at his pleasure and teach his senators wisdom." Now, this boy is gone from prison into governance. Senators of the land and now to be taught wisdom by Joseph. This is amazing. This is amazing. The man had come a long way, now, you know, he was sold, he was in prison. God tried him and tested him that he has passed his tests. Now God says, "Now, I send you forward to be a teacher of wisdom to senators." Amazing. That God can make you bring change, because you watch it. If you are the one teaching senators of a nation, you are so positioned to affect the laws of a land. It means, because the senators are the ones that normally legislate. Can you imagine that you have access and influence over senators of a nation? It then means that the laws of that land are going to be affected by your wisdom. What a change such a man will bring. Can you see how God was getting Joseph ready for such impact? Nationally, for a nation that was not just a nation, but an empire. Because at this point, Egypt was not just a nation, but an empire. Egypt was a ruling nation, an empire over many nations. Now, let me come back to verse 17. Psalm 105 verse 17 says, "He sent a man before them." I want to dwell on that a little, just a little more time, give it a little more time. "He sent a man before them." Any man that goes before others will suffer many things. That word, "before," simply means ahead of, in front of. It means that person is going to be a way maker, a pioneer, a road maker. You know, one of the reasons why many of us who are either as leaders in the church or leaders in professions or in governance are not making much impact is because we don't realize the before position. That one, "before," means there are people behind you. And whatsoever you are doing is not just for yourself, but for the people you are ahead of. You must think of them in every action you are taking. Unfortunately, we have leadership that doesn't think of the lead. Unfortunately, we have leadership both in church and in governance and in different sectors of life who only think of themselves, but not the people that are behind. Anywhere you are now, that whatever you are doing, you are not thinking of posterity, those behind. You are selfish and self-centered and you may not have any impact on those coming behind. This man was sent before. And you remember, when John the Baptist spoke of himself, look at what he said in John, chapter 3, verse 28. He said, "You yourselves bear me witness that I said, 'I am not the Christ,' but that I am sent before Him," to do what? To prepare the way of the Lord. One of the tragedies of ministry in church is when men seem to be preparing way for themselves and not for the Lord. What the man or the woman is doing is for themselves, is not preparing the way. Now, whatever level you are in ministry right now, the greatest thing about ministry is preparing people for the Lord. Not for yourself, not for your denomination, but for the Lord. Unfortunately, most of what we call ministry and church activity is a preparation of people for the preacher, for the church, for the name of the church, not for the Lord. And you know, for John to be before the Lord and prepare the way of the Lord, you remember what is said in Luke, chapter 3. And I want to take that, take you there, Luke 3. Look at what it implies to prepare the way. Luke, chapter 3. I read verse 4. "As it is written in the book of the words of Isaiah the prophet, saying the voice of one crying in the wilderness, 'Prepare ye the way of the Lord; make his path straight,'" that, take note, this is John the Baptist, Isaiah's prophesying about. The man John sent before the Lord, just like Joseph was sent before his brethren. Why am I emphasizing this? Because the before position is occupied by everyone in leadership. Wherever you are, you are before somebody. You are before your children. You are before your children. You are before your villagers, you are before a people in society, are you in governance, you are before a nation. Are you the leader of a corporation? You are before a people, you are not just there to serve personal interest. Yes, you will make money, but beyond that, generation, you are to affect people's lives, you are to better people's lives by your products and what you do. And here, he said, this voice in the wilderness was to prepare the way of the Lord. And you know, preparing the way simply means road, a way is a road. You think of a road construction. You think of the kind of machinery that is at road construction sites. Heavy machines, bulldozers, caterpillars. Then they come with all kinds of dynamites, depending on the terrain where the road must be made. So a man that is before, who is a pioneer and a way maker, either as a spiritual way maker, or a political way maker, or someone who is a way maker in the sector of economy, or in, in different aspects of life that you can talk of technology. Now, such a way maker, someone who makes the way for others, such a person is going to make paths straight. It says, every valley shall be filled, and every mountain and hill shall be brought low. You know, in road construction, you meet such terrains that are difficult. Mountains, hills, and what do you see those who are in road construction do? They break down the mountain, they try to do many things with the hill, they come with dynamites. They're strutting paths that are not straight, and then make rough areas smooth. It was a heavy duty anointing John the Baptist carried. Making the way, bringing down high mountains and hills, people in their high mountains of pride were brought down by his anointing. High and low people, valleys, valleys were filled, that is, people that were very low were brought up, while people that were high were brought down. That was the power of his anointing, preparing the way of the Lord. Now, what am I saying here? The tragedy we have in leadership, starting from the church, is that many who are in leadership that God has set before us are not thinking of us behind. We are not thinking of the Lord, you know, it is, you know, what, one of the mighty major things that John did, who was before, was to introduce Jesus who is coming behind. People began to think that John could be the Christ, he said, no, no, I'm not the Christ. If you had opportunity with a level of anointing that makes people think you are the Christ, what will you do with that? People are not even saying you are the Christ, and look at how you are already making yourself. What do people now thought and are just concluded in their minds that you are the Christ? Won't you sit on that throne and dethrone Christ? Oh, have mercy, Lord. So what am I saying here? The people who will be instruments of change in society are selfless people. They are not self-centered. Number one, they are before the Lord, they are conscious that they must introduce the Lord to the people. Number two, they are conscious of the people they are leading, that whatsoever I'm facing, I'm preparing the way for the nation. I am not here to get things to myself and make a name for myself, no, it is the people I am set ahead of. Oh, may God help us. But you know, for Joseph to get to this point, where he became so selfless, and you know, by the time he became prime minister of Egypt, that was opportunity for him to get back at his brothers that sold him. But those that sold him, when they came to knead bread from his hand, you saw what he did? The Bible showed us how he cried, he forgave them and fed them. Will you do that? If you had opportunity for someone who sold you, what will you do to him? You will sell him too. Oh, you will show him that now, power has changed hands. But you see, a man who could teach senators wisdom, had to be taken through the school of sleeping on iron. He had to be, he, you know, let me say this to you, do you realize that when Joseph was in his father's house, the gift of the spirit that was operational in him was the gift of dreaming dreams. But the gift of interpreting dreams was only given to him in prison. There are certain gifts of the spirit that cannot manifest until you are in the hard place. Because you will make a merchandise of that gift if you are in the, you are in the comfortable place. Oh God, help us. And I want to show you something here. When Joseph began interpreting the dreams, and got to the point of interpreting the dream of Pharaoh, the dream about what would change the economy of Egypt. Take note of that. That anointing on Joseph interpreted the dream of Pharaoh, and the dream of Pharaoh was going to affect, was going to be about the famine that would come upon the land, but it was to be preceded by several years of plenty. But the wisdom to handle the proceeds of the years of plenty was going to come from God. So look at it, Pharaoh, an unbeliever, had a dream, God gave the dream to an unbeliever. But interpretation was given to a servant of God. So sometimes God brings what looks like a strange marriage here. An unbeliever having the dream, a believer having the interpretation. So Joseph would not brag over Pharaoh, because the dream was Pharaoh's dream. So God can give a dream to an unbeliever. But he gave the interpretation to the believer, to his servant Joseph. So don't rule out those who don't yet know God, because God can come with a dream in their hearts. And you saw how Joseph was brought up to help in the matter, and through his interpretation, not only Egypt was saved in the days of famine, but the whole world came to get bread from Joseph's hand. I pray that the change you were born to bring, you will not fail your generation, in the name of Jesus. May the wisdom of God, and the training you are to go through, which should process you for what Joseph became, and what John the Baptist became, you will not fail in your time of processing, in the name of Jesus. Thank you Father for hearing us, in Jesus's name, amen.